TRP Nation, welcome back. Uh, we're live today at Philadelphia City Hall, talking to a very special and important guest. Today's guest is a stalwart in the landscape of Philadelphia politics and overall Philadelphia government. He has committed much of his adult life and professional career to roles that are dedicated to empowering and enriching the lives of the citizens of Philadelphia. Serving in the role of city commissioner since 2019, he has spearheaded countless initiatives such as the humanitarian heroes and the Octavius Cato Task Force, where he has worked with major brands to support communities in need across the country and highlight the importance of registering to vote, the impact of elections, and the threat of voter suppression respectively. His presence as a go-to figure for all things Philadelphia have created a highlight reel in media credits, including appearances on CNN, Al Jazeera, Reuters, Variety, Politico, MSNBC, and the New York Times. He's appeared with us before on our political roundup, and now he's back today to talk to us again. Please welcome the Chair of the City of Philadelphia Commissioner's Office, Omar Sibir.
Hey, man, I'm like, you're doing a payroll, man.
Hey, man.
How you gonna introduce that to you, man? Make you sound like I'm important, brother.
Hey, listen, I'm available, you know what I mean? Like I'm moonlight. So, 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 let me know when I need to pull up, you know what I mean? Write me in the budget, man. Uh, it's good to be here with you today. Uh, appreciate you, uh, you know, allow us to come in and talk to you. Uh, so a lot going on in the political landscape of Philadelphia, um, and the country at large. So we want to try to touch on, you know, as much as we can and get your opinion on it. Um, like I said, you've been, you know, random media gauntlet. You were basically one of the stars of the last election.
Right.
Uh, you know what I mean? Became a go-to person. So it's, uh, it's very dope to be able to sit down and talk to you.
Hey, man, glad you're here. You be all over the place.
Um, and to that point, I think the fairest way to start is like with a personal admission. Um, you're somebody for years I would just see out and about in the city, here and there. Various people, important people that I know, some I don't know, on the news in the background, stuff like that. And I never really understood who you were or what you did. So, um, I guess I just knew you were somebody of importance. So I guess to start, tell us about, um, where your interests in politics started and some background on your journey about, you know, how, how we get to the point where now you're the Chairman of the Commissioner's Office.
Well, so one of my former mentors always told me that there are people who like to serve, and then there are people who like to be served, right? So, you know, you know, there's some of them like that, but at the end of the day, I always like to serve people.
Right.
And when you do the service to people, like, people want to elevate you, right? And it's like, you can't walk around somewhere, ah, I want to be this, I want to be that. The people want to say, we want this person.
Exactly.
To be that person. And when that person gets where they need to be at.
Right.
That's me sort of see people serving people. So I worked State Senator Metzger Hughes, State Representative Louis Williams Bishop, Congressman Brady, I worked for the court. So I worked on every level of government.
Right.
And again, I didn't want to be there. I was a printer. And, uh, Louis Williams Bishop, she said, hey, young boy, what's up? You want to be my driver? I'm like, okay.
Right.
I, and you know, at that point in time, I had like an eighty-seven, like Buick, it was like a hooptie. And I'm like, this is, this is, you want to drive my car? She's like, yeah, it's cool. I had my pants down. And she never really judged me. She was like, just get me where I need to be at.
Yeah.
And there's the moment where I went out, worked with her, doing certain things.
What time period was this?
So this is maybe, I'm going back maybe about fifteen years ago.
Okay.
Fifteen years ago, we started that way. Uh, I was a proud union member, local three thirty-two. So we was always involved in politics, like on the work aside, construction day. And then I bowled, was working hard, but I never really was like, you know, first person in my family to graduate from college. Like, I just wanted to be a construction worker. Like, I was happy with that.
Right. This is good work.
Yeah.
At that point where you making twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour or something like that? Oh, man, well, yeah, shit.
You get all that stuff, man.
They hiring now.
Oh, oh, they hiring. But you gotta get up to work, gotta be at six o'clock in the morning. Gotta be up to five o'clock every day.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people don't do that, but that's all I wanted to be was just like my father, just being a construction worker.
Yeah.
Being a union worker. But it's funny because they had other plans. Like, is where I'm sitting at right now, it's like, they already had a plan for me, but I didn't know as part of that plan.
Right.
But it was starting to think about the things they put me through, the direction they fit me on. It's like I'm sitting right where I'm supposed to be at.
Exactly.
So, no, we had to serve people. But the first person my college, family to graduate, man.
What college you go to?
Cheney.
Okay, my mom went to Cheney.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Way before you.
Yeah.
My mom graduated in seventy-two.
Oh, yeah, class the seventies and eighties, that's when Cheney was like.
That's when Cheney was Cheney. And it's crazy because it's funny, we talk about this all the time, how that black educator renaissance that came through Cheney and Lincoln in the sixties and seventies, my mom was a part of that. So me going to high school and middle school in the city, all the teachers, yeah, a teacher be like, you want me to call your mom? The teachers be like, you want me to call Linda? Because they all knew my name. They all went to Cheney and Lincoln. It's crazy.
Nah, and it's funny because they give you more diseducation up on the campuses. It's like, yo, you gotta like do stuff for your community. It's like this, I love Cheney because the first lesson that we took in freshman orientation was, don't go back home talking about you smart. You know that, you know that. Humble yourself. Like, don't go, nah. So nah, Cheney was, man, very pivotal, very dope.
Would you, uh, major in at Cheney?
Recreation, leisure management, community development.
Okay.
And all that stuff. I mean, like, you know, wanted to be a construction worker. My second job that I wanted to do was like being a football coach, something like that, you know, leisure, management. So that's all I wanted to do.
Yeah. That's a great, well-rounded degree. I don't think a lot of colleges offer that no more.
Nah, they kind of slow down.
More like hospitality management.
They mix it in, yeah. They mix it all in. I mean, like, you can go all around the world with it. You know, it was like, it was over stuff from Dr. Flynn, man, Dr. Smith, two African-American strong brothers. They were just teaching us all kinds of stuff.
Right.
It was still, and little do I know that those things were preparing me to be here.
Yeah. Explain for us the structure of the, uh, City Commissioner's Office and the role you serve as Chair now.
So the City Commissioners are a three-member bipartisan board of elected officials. So we were established since seventeen eleven. So the county commissioners were first. So Philadelphia, all these neighborhoods like Frankfurt, Westfield, Overbrook, all of those neighborhoods that we have, those neighborhoods were like small municipalities underneath Philadelphia County.
God.
At one point in time.
It's like cities within the city.
Right, right, right. So it was underneath Philadelphia County. So then at a point, they said, look, we need to make Philadelphia a city and a county so that way they can collect the tax revenue and they can provide safety. Because it wasn't like safe. So Philadelphia was like different. So we like, so the city was like this city, South Philly, but then like Germantown, West Philly, Southwest, all of those was like the suburbs.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was like, you know, it's kind of cool, like when you look at it because when people come to Philadelphia, they say, man, what's up with these neighborhoods? And how these neigh, like these neighborhoods are something? It's like one thing, we already cross streets, it's a different culture where it was from across the street. And that's because these townships were around forty-eight bits of the country.
Right.
So you're talking about three hundred years.
That's crazy.
Just a long history of a town being its own town. And then they came together and said, you know what? We want to become one county. And we want to bring all these municipalities together so we could collect tax revenue, transport to prisons, and make our city, uh, safer, safer, cleaner, greener. That was kind of like the thing back there. So when we see our mayor say that now, that's what collaborated, brought everything together.
Yeah. We talk a lot about how parochial Philly is, where you got people from certain parts of the city that have never been to other parts of the city. What, what's, what part of the city are you from?
West Philly.
Okay.
Overbrook.
Hilltop. That's hilarious. Yeah, but to your point, like, you know, I, I have friends from uptown that don't cross Wistah Hicken. I got friends from North Philly that don't leave the neighborhood. I got a North Philly homie. I, I went there, I was like, yo, give me a ride to the airport. He's like, the airport? What, like, the airport? I'm like, this is only, you know. That's all we got, duh. Hey, that's hilarious. I mean, did you go to Overbrook?
Nah, nah, I went to Bock, South Philly. I, I went to Be.
My dad went to Bock.
Oh, yeah? Go to Bock and be okay, man. I was, I was definitely football out there.
Bock was a powerhouse back in them days.
Oh, yeah. It's a strong element. That's a small school.
Yeah. Who was the coach from Bock?
Uh, Tom DeFaleese.
DeFaleese. He, he, the funniest is that he, he used to call me Reggie while I was walking around. What's up, Reggie? And I'd be like, my name is Matt. He's like, no, you named Reggie. You're like, Reggie White. With them long socks and little shirts. That's hilarious. Man, DeFaleese, that was my man. Yeah, my dad graduated from Bock in sixty-six.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and I would have got trouble if I went to Overbrook, man.
I can believe it. That's how my mom was when we go on the bar. Too local, too much temptation.
Too much temptation.
Too easy to do the wrong thing.
Back then, Overbrook was like the fashion show. I mean, it was just like, it just was so much going on. I was like, nah.
Yeah.
Well, all my family went to Overbrook though.
Yeah, my mom went to Brooklyn.
Yeah.
So what's your day-to-day like now, you know, with being the Chair compared to when you were the Democratic City Commissioner?
Oh, so we all commissioners.
Okay.
I'm just like the chairman of the board now. So we make decisions. So it's three of us. We make decisions on everything from voter registration to vote tabulation. We got to certify on the election. So if we don't sign, we don't certify, then it's not a certified election.
When it, there's three of y'all. When y'all come in, are y'all all together or is it like independent? Like, are y'all, is it all Democratic or is it all, how does that?
Right. So it's two Democrats, one Republican.
Okay, so y'all are on the same ticket.
Right. So you can't have one party.
That's what I was.
Running the whole board.
Got you.
Right. And the appointments, Republicans used to control it. There was like one Democrat. So whoever the majority party is, will get at least one seat. Same exact way our city council is, you get some representation.
Right. So with that being said about y'all role in, um, you know, elections, certifying elections and election integrity and everything like that, we have an important set of primaries coming up. Uh, most notably DA's office, city controller, and multiple judges. And it's usually these elections that determine the quality of life and outcomes and stuff like that for the citizens of a city. And people tend to jump over those. So explain why it's important for people to be active and involved in these primaries before we even get to the main elections in November.
You know, the, the last, I would say the last five, so years, you know, we're witnessing history of the way how people perceive uh, politics, elections. Things we were told growing up, like, oh, you know, presidents only got a local control, don't matter what president you like, it ain't gonna affect their everyday life. It's like, nah.
That's out the window.
We starting to see all kinds of stuff with the way of handling of the pandemic and decisions that they made, how they affected people every single day. So again, you know, it's like the judges, they affect people every single day. You know, you're gonna have interaction with the judge, uh, maybe a positive one, maybe a negative one. And we have to sort of realize that, you know, there's so much bad power to the judge's head. Sometimes, a lot of times we think about criminal, we don't think about small claims court.
Right.
We don't think about custody. We don't think about states. We don't think about all that stuff.
Family court, all of that.
Yeah, all that, man. Judges got power, man. Then it's like, sometimes, and then you don't even, that's sort of thing that you could just ask a judge to do or get involved in your life, and the judge comes up and says, oh, you know what? This ain't right. Let's fix it.
Right. Uh, I think a, a big hot button topic around, um, the DA's election is like, you know, there's a perception of Philadelphia over the last like five, six years about just like crime, violent crime, murders, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but to, you know, our DA and to our police commissioner's credit, we've done a marvelous job of declining crime, you know, over the last, uh, five years. Um, do you think that it's like fair or foul, some of the criticism that, you know, current DA Larry Krasner gets when it comes to, you know, it's usually like a lot of people that aren't even from or in the city that are criticizing him about the job he's doing. But when you look on paper, it seems to be, he seems to be having an effect, a, a, a positive effect on the overall outcome of the city.
So you have to think about like, just the way our systems are in place. And again, like our offices, like I was, I was just after seven to eleven, the scitarius office, Black Stand, and whenever you want to do something different.
Yeah.
And what has been going on.
Right.
People don't like change, man.
Yeah.
Like, what you doing?
Yeah.
And sometimes people look at that as a negative, right? And so again, us, so, you know, kudos to the person who wants to change.
Right.
Like, we wanted to increase the pay for the poll workers, right? People that work every day. They was only getting a hundred dollars, right? We wanted to change, we changed the pay to three hundred dollars.
Oh, wow.
There was so many people fighting me for that.
Yeah.
I, I said, oh, but, but.
You said three hundred a day for the poll workers?
Yeah, right, to be a poll worker. When you walk into your place and you vote and you say, you see Ms. Mamie said.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
You say, I want to vote, and she open up the book or whatever, like, yeah, they poll workers, so we paid them, right? So they was only getting paid like a hundred dollars for that long.
Yeah, they working twelve, fourteen hours.
A hundred dollars?
Dan trying to file a grievance.
That's crazy.
Hey, never, since I'm here, what, what office I go?
Yo, I, I used to be ashamed, man, the issue of texts to people. I used to be like, yo, man. And it used to take like two months to like, you'd get your check. So, you know, we worked on it. Uh, but again, people were just giving resistance. People just don't like change.
Yeah.
So I think those are some of like the criticisms that you may see of the attorney, because you don't, different stuff that people wasn't really looking at.
Right.
And then when you should have changed something, it goes back because people think about their legacies and all that other kind of stuff. So I, I think that's where a lot of criticism comes from.
Yeah. Uh, why was it important for you to make sure that, you know, you got the increase in pay for the poll workers? Or how did y'all land on, you know, a, a three X from one hundred to three hundred?
Well, in the pandemic, it was tough to get poll workers, so we had a temporary sort of pay increase up to three hundred.
Okay.
But after the pandemic, you're like, nah, I'm like, no way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's make sure we keep it. So we had to work, we had to research, have secure funding. Had to explain to people, you know, why they was getting, you know, more money than certain people was paying, like other election people. They wasn't getting three hundred dollars, also make me look bad. That kind of, oh, man, calm down. It was good for everybody. So it was a lot of work. I mean, a lot of the changes I done, I thought that would have been the easiest thing. But that ended up being one of the hardest things to do. I was like, okay.
Like, y'all really gonna fight me on this?
Yeah.
So when you want to get something changed, do you have to like propose it to city council?
So we have to propose it to our board. Our board have to approve it, but then you also have to find the resources.
Okay.
So, okay, you can make the change, but then, okay.
Who gonna pay for it?
Come from, who gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
So we were fortunate to get a grant from the state, and we took the money from the state and they paid for it.
Okay. I saw they just had the budget, uh, thing here. So when the budget happens, is it that the money gets allocated at the beginning? Or is there a reserve? Like, how does it work exactly?
So our, 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 our payment cycle is in the summertime. So July first is the budget cycle. It's not like, you know, a regular person, a lot of people might do beginning of the year. Some people say April fifteenth, because we, nah, our budget is July. So we do it right then, and then we're ahead. So right now, we're at fiscal cycle twenty twenty-six.
Right.
Then it's like a year ahead. When we talk about fiscal year twenty-six, we work on it. So, so July first is when it started.
Okay. So when you say you have to find the, the resources for it, where does that come from then?
You're the taxpayers.
Okay. No, I'm saying, you say you had to get the state grant.
Oh, the, so the state grant? Okay, cool. So they give us like a grant. So, so there's like three budgets. There's a state, a local, and a federal budget.
Okay.
So every time you buy something, you get taxed.
Right.
Locals, you might, you, you gonna notice it. It might be like. I mean, you might not, but it's a lot that comes in.
Pepsi, four dollars.
But they ain't from taxing though, man. That's just.
From, it's from something.
It's the cost of the business, man. Like when you say the hotel, it's hotel tax. When you sell a property, transfer taxes. There's taxes that comes all over the place.
Yeah.
So there's all these different pots. Federal government, they got trillions and trillions of they can, they say, they say they can't account for federal money. There's like, it's just there, right? And then you got state money, then you got your local money. And, you know, every year, they sort of sit down and say, okay, who's gonna, who, where you want to pull from? And they do a fantastic job of it. It's very complex.
Yeah.
But, you know, the controller is on about this election too. So the controller can sort of translate all of that language that they be talking.
Right.
I'm here as a man that, nah, it's the controller. If you sit down in our office, hey, I want to know like how much I spent on toilet paper. I want to know how much it's, the controller can break all that down for you. She's the independent watchdog.
It's like, uh, I guess like a CFO, I guess?
No. So the mayor is kind of like the CEO of CFO.
Okay.
The controller is like the controller, like she, we use, make your purchases, she got to sign off on them. She look at it, she do audits. She say, okay, the money was here, the money was there. Okay, cool.
If you got.
Said y'all took this money, we looked up, hey, man, you know, what's going on?
Yeah.
Where's the money at?
Yeah, if you got, uh, you know, like T and E or stuff, you got to turn in as far as like, you know, whatever that is, they got to approve that and handle the reimbursement. Is this actual, were you actually doing something for work? Or did you just take your girlfriend to dinner, like, stuff like that? They got to, you know, watch everything.
Yeah, it's, it's very transparent. I mean, you know, I mean, we have a pretty good, uh, system, uh, regards with that. I mean, now, with the system, it'll go a little bit faster. You know, people say, well, you know, why does it take so long to get paid from the city, things like that. It's like.
Yeah.
You go through all these checks and balances to make sure that you, the taxpayers, don't lose.
Yeah. What is the city's like standard? Because I know when you deal with different companies, some is net fifteen, net thirty, net sixty, then like, what's the city's standard? What is it? Hurry up and wait? Like, what's the standard of getting paid from the city? Is there a standard? When you see Brad, did he pull up on the block in the city truck?
It's nice. It's, it's, uh, it can be faster. And I think our controller is working on it. That's where you walk through the RFP process. Because you know, you got to go through, you got to get the approval, you got to get people to look at it. You got to people say, hey. And then, you know, it's like you rented a service and then you got to wait to get the fee. I mean, you know, and that's trying to get African-American businesses, you know, involved. I would say you have to, you should have a lot of credit. So that way, you're waiting on your invoice to get paid.
Right.
You can pull from that line of credit and say, hey, you know what I mean? You can still do business. But some businesses, unfortunately, they can't really sustain that week. So definitely something that we as policymakers need to work on, see if we can do it to make that better.
Yeah, try to get them paid more so that they're more inclined to take on the city projects and stuff like that rather than solely focus on independent work that pays faster. Now, going back a little bit, you, I want to know how you went from, you said you, someone said you want to be a driver. So how do you go from being a driver to chairman commissioner?
Hey, man, the same way how Bob Brady went from a driver. It's like, see, people look at drivers like being like a floppy or like, nah. But in politics, that's like the best job.
It's like the most important person, yeah.
The important person.
Yeah, you ever watch The Wire?
Because you get in that per. So it's like.
Worked in his career.
You know what I'm saying? So it's, right, I mean, so it's like you being able to get that elected official to whatever place they got to be at. And then you going to make all those different connections with all those people. So the driver is like the critical part. And so being there, I got to meet people. Again, I got a union background, so I already had unions and unions. They like elect, like a lot of people, they got the ground game, they got checks. So I was already like involved in politics from that side. But when it was okay to be a driver, I was like, all right, cool. And then that's all I was happy to be because of the day, just being with her, that gave you clout. That gave you, so I was cool.
And access.
Access. You get to know who's who, schedule, and then people say, hey, I need her to be there, they start talking to you.
Right.
They go ask her, you know what I mean? Can I, can I get you there? No, I ain't going to talk to the driver. They going to talk to the person right next to you. Like, you know, if you see somebody walking in, never walk to that top person. Walk to that person that's whispering right inside there, the person that he handing something to you. Hey, I need such and such to be here. More likely, they'll definitely get on there. And that's started from there, servicing people, helping people out. And, uh, at that point, she said, well, why don't you think about running for traffic court jobs? So we had a traffic court. I was like, okay, cool. Traffic court, open it up.
Run for traffic court judge?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's when we had traffic court back then. So took her advice, uh, ran for it, came in first place. After I came in first place, they abolished the position.
Oh, man. So you won the election.
Won the election.
Well, Chris Ross. Congratulations on getting the most votes. Too bad you lost.
Yeah, they took, they took the job back. And I was like, well, wait a minute. And so at that point, it was really, that was a rough patch for me.
Yeah.
I was really, I felt, I went through depression. It was like I went through it. And then at the end of the day, as an African-American Muslim man, it was really challenging. It was a lot of people like, well, you Muslim, nah, ain't nobody not gonna vote for you. And so I fought through all of that to get to this point. And I'm like, okay, cool, we won. Ah, look at this now. Look, I'm trying to tell y'all, this thing worked for y'all. And then I was like, oh, see, I told you, man, it was going to do that. So going to the barber shop, that just was like rough. And it was just like, people like, first time they ever voted, they voted for me. And it was like, that's the reason why we don't vote. I'm telling you, man.
Don't matter.
Don't matter, man.
It confirmed all the conspiracy theories.
Somebody in there. So it was just like, it was tough. When I was fed up, I said, you know what? Eh, I don't think I like politics. And I was ready to step back. And then Senator Benzer Hughes, he called, because I lived in his district. He was like, yo, young boy, you had to get numbers. You know, come on, man, let's rock and roll. I work with me. I was like, man, I'm done with this politics stuff, man. He was like, nah, just think about it. And I was like, all right, cool. So I sat down and asked Louis Williams Bishop about Benzer Hughes. And she was like, nah, man, this guy, he's so honest. He don't lie. Like, and I was like, all right. And she said that, said that he's decent? I'm like, I tried again.
Yeah.
And I was well for six years, man.
What'd you do for, uh, for Senator? I don't think what was your first role.
Whatever, whatever you told me, dude.
Oh, you told he got.
Because I walked in like, you know what I mean? I won the election, right? So in politics, like if you win an election, you hire one to food chain, like, you know what I'm saying? So I walk in like, you know what I mean? Like, nah, you know, we gonna answer these phones. We got to do this, we got to do that.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay. And I just was at the front desk, answering those phones for her first. But that was like the, for me, that was the most important position. Because me answering the phone, I get to sorry, thing, I'm sorry, brother was coming in. And on the desk, it sounded like a little cubicle. And I was just getting busy.
Yeah.
So one thing left to another, I ended up being like an office manager. But he just showed me so much stuff. I was learning from him. And it's funny because him and his wife just saying all those different things, that prepared me for twenty twenty. So when CNN calling, when all these people calling, they got the big lights and the camera, like, when you do an interview for sixty minutes, it's like a whole production. They got makeup, they got all that stuff.
Yeah.
They got them lights, they got like thirty of them. You're like, what the heck? They like, nah, come to the studio. And you be like, what? And it's like the, you know, and that's part of their little game that they do, whatever, to try to get you to like to, but nah, it's like, oh, nah, you got to stay focused, but.
Right.
But nah, just being around him, just showing me stuff. It was like, bro, it was cool. He a good dude.
So when did you run for, what did you run for? You said you worked for him for six years.
Right.
And then what did you initially start out doing when you left his office?
Oh, so we ended up, uh, doing policy. Uh, I established a nonprofit called Vote Philly Vote.
Okay.
So he was supportive. So a lot of the election laws come from the state. So working from the state, making voting, uh, registration, all that stuff easier for people. So I was working with him on some of his policy stuff. But in this, like I say, running this office, constituent services, scheduling, just whatever pretty much he needed to do, doing events, stuff like that. That's how he is. Because this thing is like, yeah, I'm elected official, but if people need help and they walk through this door, oh, we got to help them out. It's like, yo, we had reading program, we had schools, reading books to kids, like, yo, wait, how we be teachers, man?
Yeah.
Oh, it don't matter. Like, this the program, that's what we on. And, uh, just keep on continuously like working for the people. And so in two thousand nineteen, the gentleman who was here before was Anthony Clark.
Right.
He retired. He was, uh, he was African-American. Uh, sure, he was the first one, but then he got knocked down just to be a re-commissioner again. He resigned, you know, hey, it's still open. Come on, oh. And I was like, I was still a little bit leery. I was like, I don't know, man.
Like, I ain't going, I ain't going to abolish this.
Hey, y'all, but you ain't going to do me again like this. I'm like, but, um, nah, he, you know, sat down, everybody backed me, and we got in here.
How often do y'all run for this?
Every four years. So we coincide with the mayor and city council. So every time they run the office, every time they run, we run.
Got it. So, uh, you, you would run again when, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, okay. For twenty-eight.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Guess we get sworn in in January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're, we're coming off a very, very, uh, intense, uh, twenty twenty-four election cycle with the presidential election, um, you know, and a lot of other offices that were up. Philadelphia and Pennsylvania at large ended up being like super important to the outcome of the election, you know, on a battleground level. And, um, you know, as a result of the election, Trump being elected, the country is in flux right now. Um, it's like a lot of instability on a day to day basis. So I have a two part question. Um, one, with all the noise uh, coming from the White House, what do you make of that? And then two, what is your long term prognosis for the state of the nation?
Well, so as authorities, right, like I'm an independent office, right, so I have to report directly to the people.
Yeah.
Philadelphia has one million voters in a key state. So whoever went Pennsylvania, it's an eighty percent chance that you're going in the presidency.
Wow.
That's just the way how it's like set up right now. And Pennsylvania for a long time was a democratic state.
Long, long time.
For a very long time.
Carry, carry blue, like not even close. It was like a foregone conclusion.
And Trump came on play. It's a different, he did, it's a different thing. He does everything intrinsically. And one other thing that we gotta look at too is, he reaches out to a lot of younger voters. He's on TikTok, he's on social media, so.
He's on podcasts.
Looking at him like, so I say all that to say that that movement probably still gonna be around after he leaves. So, I mean, it's a que, it's a couple of questions that we gotta answer as a country, like, what direction are we gonna go?
Yeah. And what kind of country do we wanna be?
What kind of country do we wanna be? And I think, systems that have been in place, and we talked about systems changing, you know, I think the Democrats have to answer a couple quarter questions. When President Trump made two simple questions. He said, what's in it for you? Or, and what you got to lose?
Yeah, right.
And I don't think uh, Democrats have sort of answered that question. Like, they gotta answer that question.
Right.
As you going around doing all this kind of stuff, but you really gotta articulate that to the African Americans.
Yeah, for sure.
They had been loyal to the Democratic Party. Very long time, right? And we have to sort of figure it all out. And I think that has to be changes in the Democratic messaging.
Yeah.
What uh, what do the thing do we agree with? Do we agree with uh, a man using the female's bathroom? That's a question we gotta answer. I mean, I don't have to answer for that.
We collectively had to come to a consensus.
Okay, do we want uh, men involved in uh, female sports? You know, where are we at? That far left side, okay, what are these policies that we think about?
Yeah.
Okay, are we agree with them or are we not agree with them? Because some of the science and data says that they're not.
Yeah.
And so again, I think it just, we need to come together, have a conversation. And I think African Americans need to be at the table.
For sure.
Because African American men has felt that though they had been ignored.
Yeah.
And so they're saying, this the reason why I'm not participating.
And to support your point, I think it's just generally speaking, politicians of whatever um, allegiance they have, have to decide, like, yo, are you actually empowering people or are you placating them? Like, are you actually putting things in place where people can earn a, a, you know, more than a livable wage? Be able to own a home, be able to own, you know, a vehicle comfortably and stuff like that and have some money left over? Or are you just saying the things that you think people wanna set, wanna hear in order to be able to maintain your position and enrich yourself and the people around you?
Well, it's not that simple. I mean, I think, your, your goal is to get in office. So of course, I think that's anybody, whether you Democrat, Republican, Green, anybody.
Yeah.
You gonna embellish what you trying to get done and get them excited.
But to get reelected, you gotta do something substantial for the people that put you there.
Like you mentioned earlier, uh, you said, um, people worry about their legacy.
Right.
And I think that's a big part of like politics, where it's like, alright, you're in office, now what? And then that, my legacy kind of plays where it's like, alright, well, let me do something to have my name or something, or I'm attached to this or this and the third. And then people kind of like, what is it, we're losing the plot? Whereas like, people just wanna be able to be comfortable and live good. That's really all people want.
But that's the thing, I mean, I think we really gotta think, like, that's what I'm saying, we gotta have some hard.
Yeah.
Right, from the local level. And again, that's elected officials, right, that's nonprofits, that's businesses, right? And you really gotta say, okay, like, what exactly are we doing? We really gotta sit down and look at a budget sheet and really say, okay, if you've been elected, I think the first thing to be is how can we help? Not, okay, what you doing wrong? And be a reactionary.
Right.
But being pro activist and, okay, cool, if you been elected, alright, cool, you got these board seats right here that you could pick. Here's your budget, here's like, you can hire, right? And I'm gonna give you three resumes for each position that you have. Will help you write legislation, right?
Right.
Our staff is, was so limited. So somebody come back and say, okay, look, man, here's, here's a piece of legislation, man, we already drafted up. We had our lawyers look over, all you gotta do is get your lawyers to look at it, here's a policy.
Right.
There's research, there's data. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that goes.
For sure.
You know, with that. It's not just, you know, and I think sometimes, with everybody's all over the place, it, it's, you just gonna be hard to get stuff done without clear leadership.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think uh, at times, um, you know, a lot of times our elected officials end up just fighting over uh, ideology instead of just understanding, like, the only way you're gonna get certain stuff across the line is you need bipartisan agreement. You need people to, you know, unless you have the majority, um, you, you need people to, um, you know, come to the table with an open mind and realize like, hey, even if I don't necessarily know if this benefits my constituency or not, let me at least hear it out to where I can make a proper decision and diagnose the situation rather than just shutting it out because you're across the line from me.
That's probably, but then also too is, it's also respect too, right? Like, if I'm representing this neighborhood, right? And then that majority of people that said this neighborhood elected me to be the leadership, okay, cool, so now I'm putting out my vision, I follow the vision.
Yeah.
Y'all follow the vision, which what happens is you gonna have chaos. And what we starting to see is that, you know, people have certain authorities. So people gonna use whatever they can use to get whatever they can get.
Right.
The whole game of game is about winning.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, whoever is charged, they told you whatever it is that they was gonna do. Mayor Parkin said, like, I wanna clean greens. Well, I got cleaner trucks I wanna fix. So Kevin said, this is my mission, you're gonna get on the train. Same exact thing with President Trump. I already told you, it's, it was, you know, probably twenty twenty five, but that same idea, that's not a new idea. Those are ideas from like President Reagan.
That's a Republican think tank that cons, every, every election, they're putting together thoughts on what they feel is best for the country. Based on the ideology of, like you said, the people that they represent in this, you know, eighty or whatever people that's part of this think tank, they're coming up with, you know, ideas.
Yeah, and I think sometimes, even when, at some point where it may not seem like it's uh, something that benefits you, sometimes if you have to stay the course sometimes.
Right.
And, you know, they won, so Victor goes to the spoils. I mean, they get, so at the end of the day, they wanna keep on doing whatever they can do.
Yeah.
Talking about majorities, minorities, right now, everything is so close and everything is so thin. So at the end of the day, nobody's ever really gonna come to sing kumbaya.
Right.
So now, it's probably gonna have to get sorted out in court.
To that, to that point, a couple of months ago, uh, maybe like six weeks ago, uh, Congresswoman Jasmine Cragg, who we've had on the show from Texas, she went and did a whole press conference before this, I guess it was like a budget thing or whatever that they were proposing. And she's like, they don't have the numbers, they're not gonna get this across the board, duh. And then they go in there, and they got the numbers and they got it across the board. And all of these people that told her they won't, weren't gonna vote for this thing, got flipped, voted for it, whatever the case may be. And she's got egg on her face essentially because she's based on, she's already put the feelers out and talked to the pre-recorded people to think that this is not gonna happen. And then we go in the session, and it's like a completely, you know, different thing. So people are voting for their own, for their own interest on some of these initiatives. People are, you know, being, having certain powers and things, um, luxuries dangled at them. And they're like, oh yeah, alright, cool. I'm go, I'm going across the line, or I'm gonna stay lockstep of my party in order to get what I need to get for my constituency. So that next time when I bring something to the table, they roll with me also.
Just think about like, let's think about, you know, President uh, Lincoln, he freed slaves. It was an executive order.
Yeah.
Think about the time, executive order, just like, we got now.
Right.
He did executive order. Alright, slaves gonna be free, boom. But he had to end up and come back around and then get it passed to Congress.
Right.
So can you imagine, at that time, going through whatever you going through to get on the books, slaves to be free?
Right.
Like permanently? So I mean, it's like, it's always been a challenge. Like, and that's what makes America such a beautiful place. Like in other countries, you don't get that sort of freedom of expression. Like you really.
Yeah, no, you might get one leader your whole lifetime.
It's crazy. Seriously. And then, and whenever you do get different leadership changes, you see massive destabilization.
Yeah.
So that's what makes, like I said, America such a beautiful place. And that's what we gotta understand too, like, alright, you gotta have the power.
Right.
And that's what we're gonna empower people, it starts off with the vote. Once you give up and you say, you know what, man, they got it.
Gotta vote.
Nah. Not you. Remember, you gotta bring your family, your friends. And when they look at this demographic, oh, they voters. I don't know what's up with them. But they voters, I don't know what's on their mind, but they voters, it didn't happen to us. They'll start to see those policies that you want. Once you give up, once you say, uh, pass that. And this is what we're seeing, like, we took credit, like, our moms, our grandmoms, they did those things. So again, you could have went to public school, you could have went. You know, it was, now it's kind of like, ah, you know what I'm saying too, it's tough right now.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, you said that you're voted on by the people. So you don't report to the mayors?
No.
Okay. What is, what is the like, I guess, life like? Cuz you basically like an integrity person for elections, right?
No, so we oversee it. I'm just like the CEO of elections. We just run everything, make sure.
So what is life like when, when there is no election going on? What's the day to day? Oh yeah?
Yeah, every six months. Cuz you gotta recruit eighty-five hundred poll workers like every cycle. Some people wanna do it, some people don't wanna do it.
Yeah, for the whole state, right?
So then, when you're not elected, you gotta buy a, you gotta buy the paper, you gotta, you miss like one thing. And then you do something simple, you're like, dang, why I ain't got an election? Oh no, I ain't got no paper for the ballots. You gotta check, like, the poll books, you gotta do testing. You guys still gotta go across the country, look at the new, new, new latest election laws. It's like.
How hard is that whole process? So take like, you know, a primary on a off year where we're not, we're not voting for like, we're not voting for like the quote unquote big offices, but we're voting for everything locally that matters. How intensive is that versus a year where it is a presidential election and you got senators on the ballot and, you know, all of this other stuff?
So all of the regular sort of stuff is all the same. So you got all the same basic work to set it up that you do for that. The only thing that's slightly different is you get more like inquiries and it's like a more volume of people actually using it.
Right.
So we'll get like, so sort of presidential year, CNN, all of them, they calling you, hitting you up. So that's, and that's, that's, that's a lot. When they start sending them requests, inquiries.
Yeah, yeah.
And they want this, and they want that, you be like, oh, what? So that, that's a lot. It's strange on your staff. Uh, and these sort of elections, you know, it's less stuff, but it's like a lot of behind the scenes stuff that's happening. Like, right now, we got a Supreme Court that's deciding whether or not who's gonna be on the ballot and not gonna be on the ballot.
Right.
So it's hard to prepare because you gotta wait until they make their decision, so you can do your thing.
Right.
That's completely and totally out of your control.
How, how difficult was the election during COVID? But like the mail-in ballots and all of this?
Oh my goodness. I think, yo, we gonna write a, I'm writing a book. I can't do it now, but um, nah, since people wanna do a movie about it, it's, it's like, alright, so we had the pandemic, right? Pandemic was here, that was unexpected, right? The vote by mail was already gonna go through, those Republican measure. They said, cool, they wanted to do vote by mail because.
So wait, it was a Republican measure and then the Republican sitting president ended up saying, it's a scam, don't vote by mail, whatever, whatever, they're rigging the election.
Yeah, it was, it was Republican measure. And the reason why he wanted to do it was because people that live up in the mountains in Pennsylvania, they wanted to make it easier for them to vote for the election. So when it's November here, it's like, yeah, but when you up in the mountains, you got snow, you got everything else. They wanted to make it easier for people to vote. Cuz that's basically what vote by mail does, it makes it easy for everybody to vote. Then the pandemic hit, so they said, okay, cool, so we just gonna roll it out. But the only problem was, we only had about like ten to twelve million dollars in our budget. It cost twenty-five million to do it. So they said, look, well, you gotta move by now, here's the law, pass, get it done. Go care about the pandemic. So like, y'all gotta, ain't no money coming in, figure it out.
Yeah.
So it's like, figure it out. Alright. So we ended up uh, getting a grant uh, from a nonprofit, profit organization. So we ended up, had the fundraise, hundred percent of our budget.
Wow.
Then we had to buy the equipment. Then we had to have a place to pit it at. So we ended up pitting all our equipment we did at the convention center.
Right.
All that stuff came down there. But then we're all the civil unrest, George Floyd, all that stuff going on. We had to change the election day like, like two times. So we changed the election primary date. So we had a third day of the election. Then for the, we, cuz it was a pandemic and all the challenges that there was going on, they changed the primary date, so we had to change that date. So it was just like, then nobody wanna be poll workers. Solid date, the polling locations. And it was, it was, it was rough. And then on top of that, former Pres, I mean, President Trump was like, well, you know, bad things happened in Philadelphia. And then uh, he was challenging every procedure.
Yeah.
We did. So every, every procedure, the Republican Party or President Trump's campaign, or, you know, quasi-quasi-election denying group, were challenging every procedure that we do. Everything we do, you get a letter saying.
Don't do that. Change this.
I mean, well, uh, the beautiful thing about it is we got sued like, I don't know, thirty-five times or like that. It was like thirty-five at all. Everything that we did, but it's still, when you see a name saying, you get sued, it's like, you don't like to see that stuff, man.
Sue in the office?
Well, yeah, but your name still be on it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cuz you represent the office. So some person has to be attached to it.
Hey man, we don't like what you doing, da, da, da. It does this, look at this. And it's like, you gotta talk with your lawyers, you gotta work with them. It's like, nah, it's a lot. I mean, it's a lot on your mind. Don't stop all that. People on TV saying this, saying that. That's like, okay. Then it's like you getting death threats. Death threats coming in. It's like, and not like little play joints. Like, it's real legitimate death threats from people who you can verify is a threat.
You kinda jumped into my next question, that's what I was about to ask. Once you started making your rounds on television and you started becoming more front-facing to like, you know, broader audiences, do you feel like things changed a little bit? Just like for a personal level with being out that much?
Oh yeah. I mean, your life changed, man. It's, it's no, no matter what you do in life, somebody always gonna have that look when they see you in the supermarket with your kids, it's, public people know where you live at. It's like,
Right.
Once you cross that line, that line is already crossed. It's never gonna be crossed. That's why I like when people that may service president, they keep secret service for the rest of their life. Because you're sort of exposed, like, you know, to that. And, you know, it's like, and at that point, I, I really thought about like leaving it alone, started getting death threats, cuz I fuck with my wife. I said, hey babe, what we doing? You, you know, you, you cool? And you know, she was like, nah, just, just keep on going. Like, you doing something bigger than what, you know, you thought about.
Yeah.
And then it also worked back to when I ran for traffic court. It didn't happen for whatever reason, like, just all this stuff. It's a reason why, you know, Allah pitched you right here in this place right here.
Right.
Moment. So the reason why you went to change, it's the reason, all that stuff they were telling you, you supposed to be right here, we supposed to be at. She was mad, very supportive, saying, you know, keep on going. And I sort of felt like, you know, when you think about Margaret Edwards and Dr. King and all those people, things they had to go through for a future generation, it's like if you stop and you step back, like, there ain't no way I was gonna do it. So it sort of gave me like more energy. And this is much negative energy you got, you got a lot of positive energy too. Like, I mean, I'm walking through the supermarket, it's like grandmothers. Oh baby, I wanna, I wanna, I'm covering you, baby, I wanna play with you, baby. Hugging me and stuff like that, like, oh man, like, hey, keep on your time, baby, don't let them stop you. I'd be like, oh man. And you know, when this, when your kids see you, look up to you and say, dad, you know, dad, man, dad go something. Of some sorts, and then it gets like, you know what, man, we gonna keep on going.
Yeah. Yeah, genuinely just, I, I guess, I, I never thought that deep into it, that like the city commissioners getting death threats and whatnot, like.
Well, they never were. I mean, again, that's sort of like the idea that we had, that we wanted to make our office more accessible, more transparent, and more modernized. Like, the commissioners were the ones who were uh, enforcing the poll taxes. You know, when people would come and try to register, we just to get you a whole constitution test. You had to recite the long-term constitution. And if you were lucky to recite the whole constitution word by word, you probably have to name all of the judges in a county. Or, like I said, the poll taxes was like, probably like a month of your salary. And a lot of people don't know too, about no poll taxes, is that they wasn't just like a one-time thing, like when you wanted to vote. Said like, if you was lucky to get registered, right? That poll tax would occur every election.
Right.
So to be pelted up, pelted up, pelted up, pelted up. So even if you didn't vote, that tax would be there. And my time you wanted to vote, they said, okay, cool, you wanna vote for this election, but that's what you ain't paid for the last ten that you ain't uh, run for. I mean, you never voted for. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot, man. And I really encourage people to visit uh, Alabama and Mississippi. And Atlanta too, cuz it's like a thing down there, but you gotta visit down south from where they see all of those sort of challenges that people went through, man, just that we can vote.
Yeah, I've been to Mississippi.
Yeah, it's a whole different vibe, right?
Been to Alabama too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been all, what am I saying? I've been to all the states.
Yeah.
Yeah, down south is uh,
It's different.
And we were having a conversation the other night, like, it, it's uh, but my family's from North Carolina. So, you know, it just, they, like,
It's different, man.
I don't wanna get beside myself. It, it's just a toe.
It's palpable, it's palpable racism. You have these sundown towns, like, it's a, the culture is completely different than when you live in like, a, a, a thriving like metropolis like a Philly or New York or Chicago.
You don't realize you a city slicker to go there.
Yeah.
And you're like, I'm smooth. And like, you, you realize like how, how relaxed and mundane it really is. And just the interaction. Like, they don't really have that down there in some of them places. My, my uncles, they'd come up here and they would see us like interacting and moving around, they'd be like, yo, yo, crazy going down that street. And it'd be like, that's South Street. Everybody down there, they're like, it's, it's, it's a whole different ballgame.
But it's, it's opportunity down there, huh?
Oh yeah, for sure.
I mean, we were thinking about it, cuz the majority of the, the state, like Alabama, it's like thirty-five percent black. Here, it's only like ten percent.
Yeah.
Down there, you can, I think it might be like almost forty percent black. So I mean, they have large populations of African Americans. It's a lot of land, it's cheap. I mean, again, these are things that we gotta think about. When people migrated from a parent in Chicago to Philly, like the thing you might thinking about, migrating back down there. Again, we gotta be fluent, we gotta be able to pivot. And we, that's the way we gotta think that we wanna deliver. Again, it's not all elected officials. It's all business makers, po, you know, nonprofit people.
Yeah.
Everybody gotta be at the table to say, okay, here's my talents, here's how we're gonna address, here's how we're gonna fix our community. And I think we've forgotten away from that. People clout to you, people want everyone that. Not, you're not organized, not unified, you're gonna lose every time.
Yeah. Is there anything um, else on like the city agenda or whatever that people need to be looking out for? Um, you know, we know that the, the, you know, the uh, primaries are coming up. What's the date for the primary?
May the twentieth.
May the twentieth.
May the twentieth, but we have satellite locations, right, and they're open uh, all across the city from Monday through Friday, nine to five. So you don't have to wait until May the twentieth to vote.
Awesome.
You could walk in, you can request the ballot, they'll print it out. And there'd be somebody there that you could talk to, and you could catch a ballot before then.
How impactful was the early voting for the presidential, the last election cycle that we just had? Cuz that was like a big thing that, you know, um, got national news coverage was Philadelphia's ease of the early voting process.
So we're the, we're probably ranked probably the most easiest place to vote at in the country. I mean, uh, for my standard, you know, I thought it should be used a lot more, like,
Yeah.
You know, but, hey man, they open. You come over all year long.
Yeah.
And when I closed in twenty twenty, we had temporary spots open. But with the pandemic, we used a lot of schools, a lot of places that you couldn't use.
Right.
So we have a whole place that's dedicated to these places. We have ten of them all across the city.
Yeah.
And we just want people to use them more. And it's air clean, man, air conditioning, like, hey, they beautiful.
Yeah.
So they wanted, we wanted people to use them.
What do you say to the people that's like, I ain't voting early, that's a scam. Like, they, they doing whatever with my vote, I'm voting on election day, the way the founding fathers intended. What do you think to the conspiracy theorists?
Hey, I say, do it, do it any way makes it easier for you. But if that's the way you wanna vote and you gotta go out the country, do that before you vote.
Right.
If you waste your last minute, you If you wait till the last minute, you go out the country, you're not gonna vote.
Now your votes not gonna be counted, yeah.
Needs you to be a part of this beautiful franchise, and it's now's our time, man, like, you can't expect things to go. We already tried not moving, just whatever what it is. We already tried, it, it just don't work, like, alright, cool. And they don't want you to vote, and they gonna keep on going, they just not gonna stop and say, why don't you come out and vote, no, okay, you're not voting, okay, cool. Thank you, that's even better for me. Don't come down to city council, okay, cool, fine, we gonna keep on cutting this pot, whether you're here, whether you're not here. But don't come down to DC, don't never come, never come, it's alright. And that's the thing, like, all this stuff is like, eligible, like, for you to come there, just, I'm telling you, just the power of one person coming there and saying, hey, man, what? The hell is this, man? They gonna say, oh man, where you from? Let's sit down, man. And they go, you know, so I mean, and again, it's, it's all your taxpayer money. It's not like it's our money, it's just y'all's stuff, man, so they get banned out of it.
Yeah, is there anything else, uh, you know, city wi- uh, city wise or city why that people need to be on the lookout for as. You know, going into the rest of the year.
Listen, we got these citizens handbooks, we went through a lot for these handbooks, man. Alright, you have to pay a political consultant about five thousand dollars to get the information that's in these books. Take advantage of this stuff, man, everything in there for you to be an informed citizen. For you to sit inside of your house and press a button. So if you want us to deliver them to your house or wherever, we got our satellites, we got everywhere, but these right here, man.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, how do people get their hands on them?
Oh, just call us up, uh, we could live them to you, or they're in our satellite locations, you come to anywhere at City Hall. Our website and vote that philly.gov, vote that philly.gov, and you know, reach out to us and we can make sure that we get them to you.
Right, uh, last thing, got your Reggie White jersey on today.
That's right.
Draft was last night, um Eagles picked up a dog at thirty one, Jahai Campbell from Alabama, I don't know how he keeps doing this every, every year. How you feeling about the rest of the draft and what's your outlook on the twenty twenty five, twenty six season?
Oh man, they gotta draft uh Deionson, man, Shador gotta go, that ain't right, man.
We, we gonna be here till four or five.
Like, seriously, like, like, come on, man, like, you know, I mean, I don't, it's like, yo, he's the best, one of the best players, man, like. It's a shame, right, to see that sort of culture, like, so blatant, it's like, come on, man.
Child pays for the sins of the father, and that's the, that, that's one of those.
Couldn't get the dad, we gonna get the son.
And, you know, I, I saw people, and I'm not gonna go super irate, but I, I saw a lot of. Things getting spewed yesterday from, from people that look like us, that were just saying anything. And you saw, oh man, I'm glad he's getting humbled, and I, and I'm like, you, to play quarterback, you have to be arrogant already. And I'm like, I don't know if y'all have ever played for, to be a quarterback, you have to be one of the most arrogant people on the planet. That's just the nature of the position, so it's like to see someone like that, and then he's Deion's son, so yeah, I don't have a, 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 a. Get it out the mud story, and I don't have to retire my mom and all these crazy things, and I saw a lot of that, like. Well, he don't have the sensational story that you see some of these people, and I'm like, what does that have to do with football?
Yeah, all, all black people ain't poor.
I mean, it's like, no, it's just, no, I, 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 to be honest with you, I don't really think it's his dad as much of itself. I don't think they look at him like, okay, he's not somebody that, but then the day. Like you said, you need those sort of people at quarterback to take that pressure, cuz no matter what big market you go to and you playing that game, it's on you. And, you know, they say, well, he don't got a strong arm like Josh Allen, it's like, okay, but Josh Allen never won a Super Bowl, like, is it, like?
Josh Allen wasn't Josh Allen when he came in the league, that's another thing too, I've, I've, I've realized that like certain people aren't allowed to just grow and.
You gotta be a finished product.
You, if you take it to basketball, look at the way.
If they like you, that's the thing, like, if they like you, it all depends, like.
They tried to write off Cade Cunningham a couple years ago, and Cade Cunningham legitimately has the Pistons in the playoffs balling, they just three X they win, so this shit, you have to let people grow and get back.
And that's funny, like, when you think about like strong fathers, like Eli Manning. His dad was like, yo, he not playing at San Diego. Don't even draft, like, he was like, and it's like, Deion, like, don't really. He ain't really all, I mean, that's his coach too. So it's not just like this is there, like, yo, that's his coach, so any coach, any player would act like.
And you already know, they're setting up to do the same thing with Arch Manning next year, where they're gonna, demanding hierarchy, that, that, their American. Yeah, they gonna come in and they're gonna dictate exactly where they want him to go. He's gonna have all the endorsements, I can, you can already see it, from the time he starts for Texas in August. All the way through the draft, it's gonna be all about Arch Manning for the next year. And he's gonna be allowed to be as brash, as, as non humble as he wanna be, and nobody's gonna say nothing about it.
So, I mean, I don't know, uh, we'll see where, where it goes, but, I mean, hopefully. If he goes for a good team, like, that's where he gotta go in his favor. Because it's gonna be at a point where it's like, you, you can't let a player like that just go on the draft. So, I mean, he's gonna get drafted somewhere.
Matt said he saw something yesterday during the draft where, in the top, it was like probably seven picks was in, and he was the number one prospect on the board. And then they got to like twenty picks in, and they was like, he's number three or four.
He went to down to three or four, he went all the way down to thirteenth on ESPN.
And I'm just like, what does this mean?
Like, literally, I chose it, he was number thirteen on ESPN, I took a screenshot of it, cuz I was gonna write a letter.
Yeah, no, 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 he.
He went to thirteen.
Yeah, that's crazy.
This was after pick twenty five, and I was like, how did we get here?
That's what I'm saying, I'm looking at like Cleveland, I'm looking at all these places, like, yo, y'all, all need a quarterback.
You saw Pittsburgh, they, Ryan Clark and all them thought it was a done deal, like, when they drafted, Ryan Clark and all was like, what in the world, like.
Even Cam Hayward, the defensive tackle from Pittsburgh is like, yo, what are we doing? We don't have anyone to play quarterback, we did the Mason Rudolph thing two years ago.
I think they're really, really holding out for uh.
For Aaron Rodgers.
That's what I said, yeah, I mean, but I think you're gonna.
At this point, you kinda got to.
You, you all in on, you. You a poker player, hey, push the chips, all in on Aaron Rodgers.
Yeah, we'll see, I mean, like I said, but um, but NFL, I mean, it's something, man, it's like, you know, I mean, that's a whole nother conversation.
Every time you think you got the NFL figured out, they hit you with something new.
It's good with something, and that's the thing, like, they united at what, whatever their values are.
Because.
It's not what we want for the NFL, y'all not gonna tell us what to do, right?
And it's like, when the NFL makes these dramatic shifts, whether it be in the player archetypes or the offensive structures or whatever it is. Everybody moves with it, like, it's like such a copycat league that everybody moves with it, so Shador is basically being graded.
You gotta remember, but you gotta get forced into that. Like, cuz like Taylor Harris, like, alright, take up for example, he really the first running quarterback to ever win anything. They always got to a point where they couldn't get to the, get, get across, he the only one that got across. Playing that sort of style of football. And so now, it's like, okay, we start to look at it and see, but, you know what I mean, like, we'll just see how it go, man.
Yeah, but these players have been so dynamic over the years, like, you look at like Mike Vick or Donovan McNabb, Cam Newton. They kinda got chastised for running and being a running quarterback and not being pocket present guys. Now you got Shador, who doesn't, he's a pocket guy, and it's like, what's he doing, he's not running.
Yeah, why you running a pro style offense?
It's just crazy.
Nah, that's, that's the thing, like, so he got, he got the right exposure, he been working with Tom Brady, like, you know, like, he. He got, he knows how to read defenses. Cause the other day, like I said, I mean, like.
Yeah, you, you got some of the best guys in NFL history saying, he's the guy, you got Brady and Breeze, like, no, he's. What, what are we doing, like, he's the best one, and everybody's like, nah, nope, mm-mm.
Let's take up the click, man, that's, they gotta click, it's like, you gotta, you gotta come around, so we'll see, we'll, we'll see how it all develops, because. He might be able to change a different dynamic, the thing is, he just gotta get on the field, that's all. No matter where you get taken at, even if you don't get drafted, which, look, I seen, seen, things been happen like that. Where he might not even get like drafted, like this uh, the documentary, that's your a black quarterback?
Yes, uh, watch on Amazon, yeah, it's crazy.
And so it's like to see it now, it's just like, wow, so, he's gotta get on, he's gotta get on the field. You know what I mean?
I think, I think uh New Orleans has the uh fortieth pick, I could see him going to the Saints.
Or, like, for real, for real, even if you don't, let's just say you don't, right, well. He went up to like the CFL, like where I keep, it's what I did or whatever, or they're different league. Like, he gotta understand, like, he got star power, and like, some of these players gotta understand that they do like have certain power. Like, you know, we figure like, once you get a free, like, even with the NBA, a lot of those guys, if you're a free agent, you could go play somewhere else. And then you can start your own thing.
Yeah, I saw Kendrick Nunn just got the MVP in uh one of them leagues over there, and somebody was like, I'd much rather do this than being like. Ninth man on roster, not getting a tick in the NBA.
You figure, are you figuring you get hot first strike, you get your first strike, but that second one? Well, you really wanna soup up, if you say, look, man, we can get four or five players, we do our own thing, we own the team, do everything, cuz.
Yep, you can negotiate for equity.
Most of the money they make is off the TV right there. So it matters, like, okay, cool, kids are gonna watch, who they gonna watch, they wanna watch. If they ain't playing over there, no, hey, that's, and that was kinda like the same thing, I guess, with the Negro League. Like how when you see like those mergers of the leagues happen, unfortunately for the Negro League, they never had a merger offer with MLB. It was supposed to have been really a merger, not necessarily them taking all.
Handpicking the best player.
The best players and then just breaking their league up, ah, and so, it's sort of move forward, I mean, this is a monitor. Because I think, man, I think he's smart enough to do something like that, you know what I mean, so, as long as he keep his head up, you know, and do his thing.
Yeah, I loved what he said last night after the draft about, you know, it's basically in God's hands at this point, like, it's, it's Devon Tommy. We didn't expect this, but we, we gonna roll with the punches and we.
Robert Griffin Jr. was like, this is another, Robert Griffin the third, excuse me, he was like, this is another um example of him being like. Willing to stand in the fire, cuz like you have all this big production as you create, but you don't get dragged for it, he like, hey, it ain't go the way we thought it was gonna go, cool, we'll be back tomorrow. It's like, he didn't hide from it, he didn't run away, he's like, no, cool, it didn't work in my favor, it's, it's what it is, you know what I'm saying, we'll see what happens tomorrow. I'm like, yeah, I, I like him a lot, I mean, I, I like Deion, so I, I like all of them, and I understand, you know. I understand success and. Belief in yourself getting mistaken for arrogance, and that, that, it happens way too much when it comes to us, and I, it's just.
And that's the thing, the thing is, it's not, and it's not so much to tell them, their idea might be, I don't want that cockiness to go to, to the other player. I don't wanna start, you know what I'm saying, like, if you look at like centers, like, it's like, no, the deal that Krugler signed, like, come on, man, like. That was a standard deal.
I love that Michael.
Success that he had. I'm saying to you, standard deal.
The chairman of Warner came out and was like, I don't know what this is, this is like a non-issue, like, what are we talking about here? The deal, hi- his output justifies the deal, it's simple, it's not, he didn't break tradition in the music. I mean, in a movie business and nothing like that, we've done these deals before for other people. Let's stop talking about this.
Yeah, and he got, he got the numbers, like, and man, and the, and the movie was phenomenal.
Phenomenal movie.
I mean, that, that's gonna win awards, I mean, it's, it's that kinda movie.
And created a new piece of black IP, a new piece of black intellectual property in a, in a genre where we normally kinda stay away from. And he broke the mold, so now it's gonna inspire other black directors and creatives and stuff like that, like, yo. I don't gotta just do crime genre or, you know, real life based stuff, whatever, I can do fantasy, I can do sci-fi, I can do whatever.
You gotta think about it, like, we never had like a movie, you know, with all our historical figures that we have. I mean, man, you got, man, Booker T. Washington, I mean, you got so many different people that we could do like stories on, love stories, stuff like that. Business stories, cowboy stories, like, it's like so many different things, and then our relationship with the Native Americans, like, it's so many different. Ways other stories weren't being told, and it's like, you know, it's like, wow. You know what I mean, it's critical that we do it because people don't really see, people, the history books again, thrown away, ain't nobody reading now. So that's the way we gotta keep on telling our stories and telling our narratives.
Absolutely, sure.
You know, it's just a lot going on, but again, I think, you know, and I never really answered the question, it's like the direction of our country, I think. Our direction, I mean, is gonna be like, things gonna be nice, man, I think it's gonna be different. You know, because as you're starting to see, you know, in a couple years, maybe in about ten to fifteen years, it's gonna be majority minority country. Where you'll see more African Americans, uh, more Latinos, more Asians. You know, and that's gonna be the majority of our country.
And Steve Stow, Steve Stow's book, The Tannen of America, he basically said that there's, you know, the theory is that by twenty fifty. The majority of the country is gonna be some form of mixed or biracial or whatever like that. And everybody's gonna slowly start to end up, you know, being close to or at the same, the same skin tone, where it's like now. What do we do with racism when, when eighty percent of the people are all the same skin tone?
So I mean, it's, it's, it's a war of minds, uh, we saw the administration now where they proposing. Uh, five thousand dollars for people to have babies now. Americas, they never really having, when children they used to have, you know what I mean, so. We'll see how it all turn out, I mean, I, I always look at the company as being half full, right, that's just what I always look at, right? Some people are frustrated, what's going on now, but my thing is, like, you wanted to be bad, like, okay, hopefully I'm wrong. Hopefully, whatever it is they going, I hope it ends up being right, like, that's just my view of it. Because I live there. I don't wanna see them depressed, all the gloomy things they be talking about, like, oh no, it's gonna be, it's like, I hope it ain't gonna be that, you know what I mean, so.
Yeah, so it's like, you know, like you said, looking at it glass half full, it's like, hey, it looks, the, the outlook looks, you know, grim now. But if, if it works, if all of this chaos that, you know, Trump and Elon and all of them are creating, what if it works? And, and it ends up benefiting everybody, you know, in the long run, and you know, it goes for, they go from mad men to geniuses, you just never know.
I'm about the country first, cuz I'm. I guess I have my children here, I don't wanna see wars, I don't wanna send this stuff, I hope, everything. Sort of uh bounce itself out, but again, we still gotta just be prepared. But at the end of the day, you know, no person is bigger than this country. At the end of the day, is that sign keep on rising, we gotta stand up and do things we need to do for our community.
One last question, do you have any uh other, like, do you have any higher aspirations as far as like keep going, as far as like any more political things?
Well, it's important time right now, man, I mean, for the public goal, they may not say that this is an important position. But I mean, or there's other positions that's more important, but from what I've noticed from the things that I'm doing. Like, there's world leaders from all across the world calling up like, hey, man, what's going on with the election, like. And so I know something that I do has that sort of impact, so I'm grateful to just keep on doing whatever it is, what the people want me to do. If y'all want me to do something, well, different, okay, whatever, but. Right now, I just try to stay focused on what I'm doing, you start thinking about all that other stuff. You start doing your job for that as opposed to being for the people.
That makes sense.
You know what I mean, it's like, I, I can't do it, some people try, ah, I'm trying to do this, nah, man, cuz you're not gonna do what you doing well, man. Do it well, like Doctor King was talking about, just be like the best like street sweeper, be like whatever, just. Be whatever it is what you doing right now, just do it real well. And everything else gonna take, you know, they gonna take us, you know, do what it do.
What's the website again for the book?
Sure, man, this, not just for the book, man, you can get everything on this show, vote dot philly.gov, you can get everything you need, you can find out where your polling pieces are. You can get registered to vote, you can just, any questions that you got, past election results, everything you need is on our website, and we encourage people to do that. And if I was all, even on social media, like, I'm at Omar for Philly, at Omar for Philly, F O R Philly, like, I'm on there, we interact every single day. Figure all the information that you need, and if you ever need us to be anywhere, a school, a block party, whatever, like, we'll get.
Y'all do pull ups.
We'll be there. We'll be there, we like to be there. Like, aside from all this stuff, like, I really like being, interacting with the community, because. There's nothing like that power, that energy that you feel, like, when you talking to people, people can see you, touch you, feel you. And, you know, cuz we, you know, we end up doing more stuff than election stuff, right, right, like, we be ripping and running. Cuz once somebody see you outside with a suit or whatever, I need you to do this, I, I know you doing election stuff, but guess what, bro, I got a problem with this. And that's very rewarding to be able to say, you know what, I hear you, you know, we got that thing fixed.
I can solve your problem.
And then I see you walking around, and that sort of, you know, anxiety and fear that you had on your face. Is no longer there, it's like, you know what, cool.
Uh, where can people uh go to get signed up to work the polls and make that three hundred dollars for being a poll worker?
I don't know website, man, vote dot philly.gov, you can click on everything, we actually got a mobile version now where you can just go to it. Become a poll worker, register to vote, everything is laid out.
Otherwise, it's like this information downloadable, like to your phone?
Oh yeah, you can click right on it, right, it's right on uh, right on your phone.
And uh upcoming deadlines, registering to vote, requesting a mail in ballot, and the actual voting itself.
Sure, so May the fifth, that's the voter registration deadline, uh, May the thirteenth is the voter registration deadline. And then May twentieth is the election day. So May fifth to thirteenth.
Awesome, Commissioner Sevier, we appreciate your time so much, man, it's been a great, uh, you know, episode. Second time on the show, man, you, you in rarefied air now, you know what I mean?
Ain't been on twice, he keep calling.
K R P Nation, we outta here, live from City Hall.